It is seven o'clock and we do have a quorum. I'll call the February 13th, 2018 Board Supervisors Meeting to order. We have Jeff Lowery, I hope I said that right, from Legacy Church to do our invocation today. I ask everybody to please stand and remain standing for our pledge.
All right. Father, we just thank you so much that you love the people in this room and you love the people in our county, Father. Lord, I pray that tonight that you give us wisdom to make the right decisions for a prosper county, for a safe county. I think it were a flourishing county, Father. We thank you for that, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome everyone. We'll move right into our agenda, citizens' time.
I guess it's on me. I gave each one of you these, this is a Farm Bureau Initiative, so if any of you gentlemen have a place in your district where we could leave some of these for the general public, if you get in contact with me, I will get them to you. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Okay, is anyone else would like to speak during citizens' time? Here none, we'll close citizens' time. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. Entertain motion, pay the invoices.
What was your motion?
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, pay the invoices. Any board member would like to discuss any invoice or pull out any invoice? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of January the 23rd, 2018 minutes. Entertained a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any corrections or changes need to be made to the minutes? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next item is old business. We have appointments. We have Mount Rogers Community Service Board, three-year term. Dr. Hausman was on that. If they have finished and hired a director, I guess, from what I understand, Mr. Burr, I'll take any nominations from the board that would like to serve on that board. And they do meet during the daytime at... In the afternoons?
Yeah, it's usually afternoons, yes.
In the afternoons. Mr. Lester, wouldn't you like to volunteer for that?
I can do it. No one else would want to?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Yeah. Okay. I have a motion to appoint Mr. Lester.
Certainly.
Have a second.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Mr. Lester. New River, Mount Rogers Workforce Development Area Consortium Board?
They're still looking for a business representative. I'm still trying to see if I can find a representative. If any of you all have a business representative you would like to have on there, they're always looking for members. Mr. Hale will second that, I know.
Okay.
It's part of your civic duty. That's all I can say about it.
Recreation Commission Committee. Mr. Hale, do you have anybody from Fort Chiswell yet?
Yeah, I had a question for procedure. You know, people that are interested in rec fall into slots. They either have children that are there and they grow through it. Somebody on this, is it normally people that have children in the program and they're active, or do you try to find people that don't have any children?
It's been a combination of both. It's been those that currently have children involved with it, there's been those that their children probably were in it 10 years ago or so and they stayed involved with it or then come back involved with it. There are no restrictions or requirements either way.
All right. Given the election, we'll have somebody.
Okay. And please try to get that by our next meeting. Mr. Hale, if you could, we'll get these things wrapped up. Okay, with Grayson Regional Library Board, Mike Langford, can he serve another term?
He is not interested in serving another term, is what I understand from the library board. There have been a few names interested that I think I forwarded all those to you all. Ms. Davis, I just forwarded her information she filled out last week. I hope you all got it. Stephanie Davis, she's with the Virginia Tech Center for Local Government and has recently moved to this area. She filled out her application. Mr. Bailey, I believe filled out information that he was interested. And the library gave us a name, it was former Shefty librarian.
We are Martin, but I kind of wish you would do that.
Okay.
Well, does anybody want to make a motion to appoint one of those two?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ms. Davis.
Ms. Davis.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
The last one on our Mr. Chairman is the Withfield, Withland Chamber of Commerce, and they've had a change in their bylaws this past year. They're currently... They've got the minimum or they're above the minimum that they require. They can add up to some additional members, but they are at their full level. So, I'm not going to put this one back on there. If there was a board member or someone that we felt was interested or really wanted to be on there, they said, you know, talk to them and they could have a vote on their membership to add an additional member.
Well, the only person that's talked to me is Scott Park. He said he would like to be on the board.
Would you like to meet and talk with Ms. Atwell and see if...
Go ahead and talk and if, you know, if they want to add one more, that's fine. If they don't, then that's fine too.
Be glad to.
Okay, anything else on our appointments, Mr. Burr?
I am not aware of anything else. Are you, Ms.?
Anything else on our old business? Here none, we'll move into new business, the 2018 budget calendar. Mr. Burr, you want to talk, explain how this works?
Board needs to adopt a budget calendar, what I've got there and what is in bold are board meetings or intended to be board meetings. Revenue projections have always been the treasurer, the commissioner, and the small budget committee that go over the revenue. Letters have gone out, all the budgets being by the 28. We'll draft all those, get all the information compiled and get out information to the board members. The budget work session for our new board members, I think I talked about it during the orientation sessions. Typically, we have all the departments come in here during that one week and make the presentations. I have got Monday through Friday on there. Hopefully, we can be done in a Monday through early Thursday afternoon. The school board may not be able to meet at this point in time. We'll have to work that date out with them. This gives a preliminary with it. Then it gives us final budget go to the board, then by April 24th, looking at review of the budget and setting the tax levy and have a public hearing in May. That's an aggressive schedule. We usually plan for an aggressive schedule, but that gives us time if we need to bump it back, we can amend this budget calendar and drop it back into June if we need to do the final completion of the budget.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
What's the hours on the work session? I assume it's all day?
The work sessions are day, 8:00 to 4:00 work sessions. And then we try to get everything, giving everybody time to get budget requests in. But over history, you have an idea of who's going to take longer, what's going to take less time. I would be pretty certain that it at least be four days on there. The last day, if it's just the school board, that could only be a couple hours, maybe an hour or so.
We'll try to, let's try to compact everything and talk to see if we can get it done in three and have the, whenever the school board can come.
Now, it has been done in the past with small budget only, but most of the time, probably the past six, seven years or so, it's been done with the full board to make sure everyone's involved. And that's the way I have it set up here, that's your office decision, how you would like to do that.
I think, to myself, I think it's good for the full board to hear everybody and they really actually know what everybody's requesting, especially all these groups that come.
Do you need the ad hoc?
Yes.
How many?
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion so passes. Exit 24 wastewater improvement contract two, change order number three.
Mr. Chairman, what you have here is the exit 24 sewer installation. You have a final closeout of the values for the project plus an addition for the Circle K stuff that we have previously talked about. Combining the two of those together, a credit of $46,366.65, and adding the work of the Circle K 37,345, it ends up in a net decrease of this change order of $9,021.65. We just received today the easement from Circle K for us to run it up through this stuff and also to continue across our property to the back to serve other property in the future. Staff's recommendation is the approval of this change order. Contractor's ready to proceed with this work.
That's always a nice one, to see a decrease. Okay, anybody have any more questions? Entertain a motion to approve change order three.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball, Matt Ball, I'm sorry. I've got Bill on my mind again.
I think Mr. Ball's voting is for it, yes.
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Why don't you sort of fight? When it goes online or is it online?
This right here will determine when it goes online. That's why this is critical, to get this moving. When we get them connected, that gives us the customer we need to get this thing online.
So, they're going to supply the head water?
Yes.
Then, about what's the time for this? We just happy with the credit, but how much time is it adding to?
By the time the work's done and we get the flows going, I would say it'd be another two months, because we also have to hook up the residences down there off of Vol. 52 Road and get those going. Commission the plant and pass all, that's what DEQ will make us pass, so it'll be a good two months before it's actually fully up and running.
So, with a two-month addition, we're still going to be online, in line with the opening date?
With the contract?
Yeah, I mean, we had a date that was put out.
Yeah, we were shooting.
The public is going to be open this spring.
We were shooting, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's the reason why I brought this straight to the board, is to wait for committee, is because I don't want to wait another two more weeks. And I sent this to the Water Committee and thank you all for saying, go ahead and move this thing forward. Contractor's ready and we want to get that plant in operation. There's some individuals that want to get connected to this system and we've got to have all of it, so thank you all for speeding up the process.
Next is Peden Boorts Engineering Agreement. Mr. Burr?
Yeah, we put up requests and proposals for SCADA expansion, that's the electronic communication expansion between our tanks and our water levels and everything that has come in. We only received one proposal back in, it was from Peden Boorts, and they have prepared this engineering agreement. You all remember, we have some money that came from Mount Rogers on this, we have some carryover money from the Speedwell.
I'm just teasing, the Barron Springs.
Barron Springs project, all that that's going into funding the construction of this. But this is a engineering agreement, the amount of $8,000 for them to provide the engineering services, and staff's recommendation is to proceed with authorizing this agreement between Peden Boorts, or with Peden Boorts.
Entertain a motion to approve. Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
Question. Mr. Ball, what are we going to get for that money deal?
This is going to get the SCADA signed up on the Barron Springs Forge tank, so that we can do the controlling back and forth on this end of the system. And fortunately, we've been able to convince RD that the entire system is integrated and it will help us with manpower countywide. We said Barron Springs, we're going to put $9,000 of the carryover money from Barron Springs against this project. And we're anticipating, I said Speedwell, but I was thinking ahead, some of the leftover Speedwell money we might have also available. So, right now, this is going to primarily get the Barron Springs Forge tank online with the SCADA, which is part of it.
The question to me is, will this upgrade and tie into the whole system so the system is more manageable?
Yes. Yep, and manpower will be freed up, instead of having to go out and physically look at something, we'll be able to do it electronically from the office, and we can put those people on and do another thing like fixing the work.
The goal of Joe, as your Mr. Hale has, to do exactly what you said. We've got part of the system under the SCADA system now. We are doing all we can to keep expanding the SCADA system so that to maximize efficiency, you've got everything visible from a computer right in front of you that gives you your levels and everything else in the process. That's what this is moving towards.
Is there a master plan that this is part of that will get the telemetry to where the pumps will work with the system? Or is it still going to be a modified system that's part of what we alert are, but do you still have to go open valves and start pumps to hand?
It's a monitoring system right now. We're not controlling solenoids and opening valves and things yet, so this is the first part of it, we can at least see what's going on. And eventually, we can go in there and add the physical piece where we can turn a pump on, turn a pump off per se.
Remotely?
Yeah, remotely, because we'd have to have solenoid control valves and things in the system. So, this will get us the first part, and we can move. And once we get this, of course, it's fairly easy to do the second part because the system's replaced.
That's why I asked the question, will this be a complete plan of how we're going to get the system automated to where you don't physically have to go and open a gate and go to a tower or to a well and physically turn it on?
Yes, sir. As part of this work, this is the first step.
But this is a completion of that work you said part, I get nervous.
This is the first part where we can actually physically monitor everything. The second part's going to be to do what you said, we can turn things on and off per se. Now, we have some of that.
We do have some of that.
We have some of that, but we're going to have to get in other places where we have to install a piece of equipment to make it happen.
That's like the line between the town limit, that valve there is open and shut by the town when they need to fill their tanks and not be sending water through or whatever. But it's not a manual operation, nobody doesn't go out there and do it. It's all through this SCADA system. They turn it on, it's a couple-minute process of it opening up that at the right speed and all that. Yes, that's exactly what this system's doing.
Thank you. Next item is the mutual aid agreements between Blaine County and With County Sheriff's Department.
You didn't call for a vote on it.
As far as it did, we voted on that, Mr. Call.
Oh, okay, I thought we'd voted on it. Okay, we have a motion and a second for the engineering agreement between Peden Boorts. Any other discussion or questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now, mutual aid agreement between Blaine County Sheriff's Department, With County Sheriff's Department. We've done these in the past. Is anything really different in this mutual aid agreement that we need to discuss?
There is not. Mr. Lawson contacted me about this, requested he just send me a letter with it. The agreement, the sheriff has already executed this, Blaine has already executed this. It's, in me, in my terms, it just basically says, we cross boundaries to work together for tactical work or other work as necessary. So, a whole lot of legalese to say that you can work together.
I have motion to approve it so they can legally work together.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, Building and Grounds Committee recommendation.
Building and Grounds Committee met February 6th, and the only action item we had was that we have a tire facility installed at the maintenance garage, a trailer to take the tires that cleaning crews are bringing in off the road, put them in that trailer. It costs about $2 a tire estimated, and that'll take about 300 tires to load the trailer. And the recommendation is to get the container there and help the road crew keep the tires that are being thrown out on the road contained at the maintenance site. Committee recommends.
Okay, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any more questions or discussions?
My understanding, well, we got the carriers moving down the fault.
I got a call yesterday that they pulled a bunch of tires up that I assume were all on the right-of-way of Foster Falls Road, and they've set them on the upper side of the right-of-way of Foster Falls Road to be picked up. I do not know if they have started moving them yet or not. VDOT picks up a few tires here and there that are on the right-of-way, but these are such a number that exceeds what VDOT would typically pick up. I still want to work with VDOT, see if we can partner any on this in the process, since they're coming off their right-of-way.
And, I mean, clean up some of these areas.
Yeah. It's great for cleanup. Sheriff's offices have indicated that they'll try to monitor these areas. We talked, maybe we should put some signs up that says, "These areas under surveillance, no litter," just trying to clean up some of these areas. But we do have a container that we can set out, the buildings and grounds, to put this on, and the main thing is just there will be a disposal cost to go with it, so we're assuming it'll be about $600 per container we haul along.
Hale was going to give a point and a call, please.
The sheriff's office will use the old trailer that they used to pull behind the van and take some straps and strap them to that and pull them back over, and then they can load them into the...
Don't overload, blow our new van up.
Yeah. Don't put too much weight on it.
Yeah. I mean, we got a, we damn well can range a day to take a dump truck down there.
Yeah, dump truck, there's only two things with that. One, we're already one person short in the water department, we may end up two people short in the water department. Billy said it's not extremely convenient to try to get them up and over the sides of the dump trucks into there in the process. The trailer works out a lot better, but if we had to, we can do that, or even we had to hook the low boy behind it to do it.
Okay, any more questions or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Anything else from the Building and Grounds Committee?
That's all this time.
Okay, next, Apex Construction Committee recommendations.
Okay, we have recommendations for change order number one, is to add a two-inch service line in the arena area. Original proposal price was $16,308, and committee discussion, that's been reduced to $15,107. Difference is reasonable, but how we buy it, we can save, I think we can save quite a bit of money there. Recommend approval.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion?
Question.
Yes.
The water line is for the dust control. Did the original plans for the Expo Center not call for a dirt floor? I guess what I'm asking is, why wasn't this included in the initial plan?
There's a whole lot of the architectural things that come up in a set of plans, and it's a needed thing for help in keeping the dust down. It wasn't in the original plans.
Any more questions? Okay, here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes six to one. Next, is that all from the Apex Construction Committee?
Yeah, that's all we have to report this time.
Okay, we'll go into other. Mr. Burr, will you give a kind of a summary and update on our trip last week?
Yeah, well, a couple items, just in general, as we may have discussed at the last meeting. Cigarette taxation issue is completely dead in the General Assembly this year. Promise of looking at it for next year. I think the latest proposal of counties going by referendum has also got the back of commission lobbies attention in the process, and we'll wait and see what happens next year. A lot of discussion about, there needs to be some revisions. Along with that, the entire equalizing of the taxing structure between cities, towns, and counties was completely passed over for next year in the process as well. General feeling from a lot of the legislators and a little more comments from this year, cigarette legislation seems to be getting more traction. Whether or not that comes to pass, we will see, but that's working on it. The good news on a couple of items that are out there, the Senate Bill 883 and House Bill 222 are basically identical bills, and they are the bills that we discussed that provide a corporate income tax incentive to industries located within certain, I'll call them distressed counties, in southwest, south side, and eastern shore of Virginia, and also provides tax incentives to those individuals that come live in those areas, work in those areas. Delegate Morefield's bill has actually got quite a bit of attention, and Senator Stanley, quite a bit of attention in the local and regional, for a run-up times, and Richmond Times talked a lot about it. Both of those bills have passed their respective chambers. A lot of discussions about it yesterday. Senator Stanley's comment that was in the Richmond Times, he said, "Listen, we're not looking for a handout here because this is basically just deferring the taxes out to companies." We're just asking for an opportunity to attract some of these companies into these areas that used to be some of the most populous areas of Virginia. And so, hopefully, as they do the crossover, those bills will continue. There was a little bit more opposition in the Senate than there appeared to have been in the House. With counties included in that bill, there were a lot of counties included in that bill. Basically, With County, Carroll County West, all of those counties are included, a large group of south side counties and some eastern shore. But it would be a great recruiting tool for our economic development efforts should this come out of both chambers after crossover. So, any contacts you have with legislators or whatever, and most everyone wires down here fully supports this, I encourage you to talk about those two bills. That could be really good for the rural areas of Virginia.
And I'm going to try to get some meetings with Senator Hanger, which is, he's chairman of the Finance Committee in the Senate. I'm going to try to get a couple meetings set up with him and Senator Carrick to talk about the equal taxation between cities. I think it's, you know, it's, we've gained more ground every year, so hopefully, I think they've come to realize they're going to have to do something, so. Okay.
Yes. Do you want to meet with the school board after that?
Yes, I had that to talk about. I talked with the school system today, obviously. I talked with the school system today, obviously, Mr. Supervisor Paul, speaking for me with George With High School, I know, and Miss Lawson as well. They requested, would we be interested in having a meeting with them following our next day meeting, go over there about lunch, we can have lunch over there, look at what is there proposing for the school system, and take a tour of the school during that timeframe.
That's fine for me.
If that works out well, we'll just put that on the next board agenda. When we finish the meeting up, or if we're not finished, we'll recess, we'll go to lunch over there, do a tour of the school, and then if we still have business to do, we'll come back here and finish our meeting.
Anybody have any objections on the board for that happening?
And they will have the architects and engineers there at that point in time to answer any questions anyone might have.
That would get us more of an idea of what they're... I know me and Mr. Lester had a meeting with Mr. Sage and Mr. Hodak and Mr. Poole, Dr. Poole, and we know what they're talking about, but I think the whole board, it's better for the whole board set, and we'd like to hear from the architects ourselves what they've got planned.
And one of the good news items, I think some of y'all may know about all of them, but I don't remember, I sent the email out, still trying to get information, but the literary loan fund that was previously approved for Royal Tree School in 2008, but has not had any activity since then because of the loss of the funding in it since that time, it is a good possibility that we could get that funding this year, and if so, could refinance the current outstanding debt there, had a lower interest rate. We are confirming that the interest rate that was offered at that point in time would still be the interest rate that we could get. Hopefully, by the next two weeks, we will have that information. We also hope to have information solidifying exact amount of funding that we would be eligible for. Literary loan has a set amount of money, there are three projects ahead of us, so whether or not they would use that money, have used that money, or would need to borrow, use some of that money, is what's trying to be determined to figure out. Worst-case scenario, it's our understanding that we could at least get $6 million, if they took their full allocations they were offered, we would have $6 million to go towards our $8 million that's currently outstanding in our debt service. Hopefully, we would have a full $8 million. If we were to get that $8 million, and if we were to refinance that at the 2% interest rate that was offered then over 20 years, it would have a net debt savings of about $175,000 a year. So, that would be very beneficial to go towards additional debt service or other items in the process.
How much was the saving, I'm sorry?
The savings would be approximately $175,000 a year if it's refinanced at the 2% rate. A lot of ifs in that whole scenario.
Lot of ifs.
And we're trying to get all those things buttoned down so we know for sure.
And that'd be about half, if they, the school board requests additional $5 million for the renovation of George With, that would be kind of half of the debt service payment. We'd, I told Dr. Poole, he needed to get real creative with his pencil during budget time, to come up with the rest of the debt service. Didn't mind giving them the money, but you got to have some more to come up with the debt service from. Okay, anything else, Mr. Burr?
I do not have any additional business at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Any board member have anything to bring to the board at this time? Here none, we are adjourned.